So, we will call the panel select board regular meeting Thursday, March 7th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. For the agenda approval, board reorganization, approval of the minutes 22113, warrants, mail, announcement of appointments to be advertised, road foreman's monthly board meeting, old business and new business, if any. Before we take a motion, I would like to welcome Rich Rider as our new select board member. I'd like to also welcome Mike and Dale back on the board. Well, congratulations, Guy.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll take a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Motion.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right. I'd like to add something on that, though I don't know where it'd be, old business, new business, or whatever, but I'd like to maybe enter into executive session at the end of this meeting to get, to be informed of what happened and, you know, the talk with what was supposed to happen between...
What I had last?
What you were, what you were going to talk about and also to talk about the road thing also, you know, that meeting that was supposed to be scheduled.
Mm-hmm. I just drew a blank.
Transfer and road crew, transfer station, road crew.
Okay. Um... Okay, we can do that.
Open me, go on, I don't care.
Yeah, actually, yeah, we can. We'll, we'll discuss it.
Open or...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. The first thing on our new agenda will be board reorganization. Can't do this right.
You've got no seats, we're organized.
Okay, as we are a new board, we need to nominate a person for chairperson.
I nominate Steve.
Second.
Any more nominations for chair?
Make a motion, nomination, please.
Second.
Call the motion and vote. All, call the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, nomination for vice chair.
Ronnie. Nominate Ronnie.
I'll second it.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion, they cease.
None being heard, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Nomination for clerk.
Nominate Dale.
Second.
Any other nominations?
Motion, they cease.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Regular board meetings to be held every Thursday at 7:00 PM, the town office, except the fourth meeting of the month, which will be held Thursday at the wastewater treatment plant at 6 o'clock. Okay, which will be the Board of Sewer Commissioners will meet. We need a motion for the paper of record.
Motion.
Motion for the banner.
Do you want yours to be a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay. Any other motions on paper record? All in favor?
Aye.
Steve, can we go back and motion on the regular meeting schedule?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, we need a motion for our regular board meetings as I read them.
Motion, regular board.
Second.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Linda, for catching that. Okay, we need an authorization for when the chair is not here to have warrant signed, or no, actually, when there's no board meeting to have the warrant signed.
Make a motion, the chairman signing the warrants.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All right.
What about the vice chair?
And emotion, if for some reason the chair's not here, who would be next in command to sign the warrants?
Make a motion for the vice.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. It's not on there, so we'll do that. Okay, standing rules of order. Meetings will be read, yeah, be run in an orderly and professional manner, control will be kept at all times, those found out of order will be removed, the agenda will be presented, or sent in the following manner and voted on by the board, name of the item, individual wishing to speak, any item will be listed, items not having a speaker will be so noted, items may be tabled or removed from the agenda, some items may need to be scheduled for another meeting. The board may limit length of majority, by a majority vote, the length of, yeah, board may limit meeting length by a majority vote of the board, this may be amended as needed by the majority of the board. Each member of the board, members of the public, be recognized by the board, may speak on the same issue for not more than once for a length of three minutes unless approved by the majority of the board. This may be amended as needed by the board, majority of the board. A member of the public which is harasses others or disturbs at the meeting will be warned and removed if their activities continue. Citizens wishing to be on the selectmen's agenda for Thursday night meetings, need to call the selectmen's office and leave a message for the board's administrator assistant by 12 noon on Tuesday. Please leave your name and state your business you wish to discuss with the board. By doing this, it will allow the administrator assistant time to post the item on the meeting notice, so others may want to talk about this item, they will be aware of it on the posted agenda. The board, knowing this not, may not always be possible due to the nature of items that come before the board, so please note, you may still arrive the night of the meeting with an item, and the board will decide if they can add it to the issues to the agenda for that night, or schedule it for another meeting.
Any motion to?
Yes.
Motion to submit.
Sorry, a second.
One thing, if a person comes in, there's only one comment that I have, if a person comes in, I think that whatever their problem is, they should have a right to state it, even if we, we can't act, or we don't want to act on that particular day, they can come in and vent.
Yeah, no, we've got that, that was the last, last paragraph.
You had it there, but it was a little bit, the way I heard it was, if, if we decided to let them, and I want to let them if they, if they have a problem, because then we, then we gotta, we probably can't act upon it, because it would be too quick.
No, we did, we did that. The board, knowing this may not always be possible due to the nature of items, even come before the board, so please note, you may still arrive the night of the meeting with an item, and the board will decide if the issue on the agenda. And that's, that's what we've done.
Well, the board will decide, but the person will still get a chance to speak.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing that since I've been on, since you've been on.
Since I've been on here. I realize that.
What was that, three minute, you're allotting three minutes?
Yeah, um, it's...
I mean, that's an awful short period of time, eh?
Well...
You know, 125 words in 60 seconds, so...
It is, but we don't stick to it, you, you kind of do that in case you have a problem, you do have a shut off point, but we've really never kind of hung to it.
Okay.
We feel that if somebody speaks, they can, they start repeating themselves enough, we'll just say, well, of course, we're starting to repeat ourselves.
Okay.
That's what we just thought.
Okay. I believe we got our reorganization done. Did I miss anything?
Just take a vote on this.
Yep, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Rich.
Yep.
We had a finance package wrapped up.
Yep.
We went, Ellen came and got us a lower rate, so we went with that and we saved $5,000 over the, over the life.
Of the machine?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
The mortgage.
Hold for a minute, please. All right, we need approval of the minutes of 22113.
Second.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
Warrants. Payroll, 3313 to 3813, in the amount of 598318.
I seen it.
Accounts payable, the amount of $11,031.12. The larger ones on here are your rocks, or your road salt, waste management with TAM, payroll transfer, and then some other smaller items. Accounts payable, the amount of $89,927.04. Obviously, your big one there is we have our new backhoe at $73,056. It's delivered, what, yesterday?
Today.
Today. So, Southworth Milton delivered our new vehicle up. From the looks of the pictures, we have a pretty nice piece of equipment in hand. Payroll, 224 to 3113, in the amount of 661058. I will take a motion on the warrants.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, mail.
Rich, are you voting on anything? You can say aye or nay or something.
Well, you gotta say something.
That's, that's, well, that's pre-me, isn't it? Tonight is my first night, so I...
Yeah, you can approve stuff tonight, you just gotta approve the...
Okay, I thought it was previous to this date.
As long as you've seen it.
There's, there's only two warrants that are previous to this date.
Okay. I was checking my notes here.
Okay, we have a letter from our...
Stain or what, I'm hanging.
No. I'm sorry.
Okay, what's up? We have a letter from Ellen asking permission to contact our town attorney to verify proof on a claim work is correct for the bankruptcy court. We've made it a policy that anybody that works with our lawyer has to get the okay from us first, to do so, and we do it on a case-by-case situation. So, Ellen's asking permission to request...
That's the records of a tax sale, right?
It's a bankruptcy, and something she's dealing with.
Make a motion to give her permission.
Second.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we need a representative for 313 at 10:00 AM, this will be a tax sale, we need a select board member to be present. That will be at 10 o'clock next Friday.
I'll be here if you want.
Okay, Dale? All right, if there's a problem...
Ronnie? You want to go too?
Huh?
You want to go too?
I'm gonna be there as a buyer, and I can't be there as a...
Oh, all right.
Maybe. I'll be there to harass the people.
Can you make a motion to appoint us a town...
Okay, so we need a motion for Dale.
Make a motion, Dale.
I'll second that.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public forum, the Bennington Station, March 21st. We have a lot on our schedule, I wish we could kind of go to that, but we have a, a full plate, but you've all seen this, if somebody wants to go, it's available, it's an energy thing on small hydroelectric, natural gas, solar, and wind, and biomass. It's at 5:30 to 8:00 PM. We have a letter from the...
Is there data on that?
Next week. No, no, 20.
21st.
21st.
Make sure tonight.
I've, I've got a bunch of stuff coming up, which we'll announce, and then as long as we have three members here to control, we can still... We have a letter from the state police, it's to do with speed limit signs, and what I think I'll do is set this out on the side of the mail, so we can discuss it with our road foreman, and he's going to be in here for a minute. Zoning administrator log, one verification, eight permits. We have a letter from our town health officer to a person that sent us a letter, and it's a response back from our town health officer to that person. We have a liquor license renewal for Quality Convenience, 346 North Arnold. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion, we're gonna...
Checking it.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
There's also tobacco on the back of that, too.
Yeah, make sure we mention that at the same time.
Uh-huh. Okay, we have for the same. Just look at theirs, it's...
Next one back.
Okay, yep, we have a tobacco license for the same.
Make a motion, approve it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor.
Aye.
I think where I got messed up is we sign, yes, okay. Good thing they put arrows, I wouldn't know what to do. Reminder, rabies clinic, clinic, March 16th, 8 to noon, the Pownell Center Firehouse. The Pownell Pownell will be hosting a rabies clinic, another vaccination by request for dogs and cats at the Pownell Center Firehouse, March 16th, 2013, from 8 to noon. That's pretty handy, and it's the Saturday. Next Saturday. Okay, I'm in front of you, next Saturday. Okay, we have our delinquent tax report. With interest and penalties, $307,091.86. Delinquent sewer.
I don't remember the back one. Neither under Steve, anyways.
Interest and penalty in the amount of $12,965.91. We have a letter from one of our auditors, asking to meet with us after March 5th. Actually, we're gonna try to set up a meeting with these, with our auditors, so maybe we can include this within that.
For March 14?
For March 14th, yes. And that will conclude our mail. Just remind me, Linda, to throw the speed limit thing back in there, I want to discuss this with Casey, or have us discuss it with them, so, but it's out. Casey stepped up. Just an announcement, we will be advertising our appointments, 'cause anybody's interested in any positions on local boards and so on, we have quite a few openings on probably every board available, they will be posted, and we will be working on them, they have to be in by, I think we're going to, what, 21st? So, with that said, we will go to our road foreman's monthly meeting.
Access weight permits, there's four of them in there.
Okay.
In that time of year.
Okay, we have some access weight permits, RK Miles, Manchester Center.
Motion, approve it.
Second.
Okay. Our road foreman has handed it to us, we are set in that direction. Just one, just one signature.
This one's good, yeah. Greenberg is in there, your representative.
Okay. We have an access weight permit for Robert Green Incorporated.
Motion, approve it.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
H. Greenberg and son, Bennington, Vermont.
Motion.
All in favor.
Aye.
We're doing that one.
There, there you go.
Hey, have a new one.
Yeah.
Head nod, something.
Last but not least, Carroll Concrete Incorporated, Newport Sand and Gravel Incorporated.
Motion.
Second. All in favor.
Aye. Mike, if you get a chance, Linda spent a lot of time on getting all the information in there about, uh, bridge limits and all that kind of stuff, go on that site and see if it all comes up, because hers, her, where she goes burden is totally different. So, if you get a chance, go on there, should everything should be up, all the bridges and weight limits, 26,000 pounds.
Okay, now we're Europe, Casey, with our road foreman's monthly report.
Okay, we're getting the mud season, it's been pretty mucky out there in some spots, we went around, we got a bunch of signs up, I think every road except for a couple is posted for, uh, mud, even though they're kind of premature in some of them, down south and, and North Pownell, there's some pretty, uh, soft sections of road, but the roads are posted with the new signs that we have to say, warning mud ahead. You've got a letter from Shasberry Barracks.
Yes.
Called the officer sergeant, actually, and indicated to him that all town highways are posted, and there is a policy here somewhere, that there's no town highway that's posted over 35 miles an hour, and there's a few roads that are posted for 25. Old Military, Shankar Road, County Road.
Center Street.
Seals Crossing Road, Center Street, Peaks Pine Road, and there's a few other ones too, but they're posted accordingly. These letters are just sent out to try to keep everybody up on making sure that the roads are posted, because a lot of the traffic tickets that they give, uh, won't go through the court system if the roads aren't legally posted.
Right.
Which all town highways in Pownell are. Excuse me for a minute, Casey, you turn that around, so I hear everybody say that they can't hear you. Clear. Yeah, just so... Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm told I'm soft spoken. Well, you are, and with the, with the thing pointed toward us, it doesn't... It doesn't do me any good, does it?
Yep, it's just...
Okay, the question, the question I had was, it said in this, however, they do give baseline, they should be spaced about one minute apart, and from intersections.
Yeah, that's 3,080 feet, and if we posted signs 3,080 feet, we would be spending a lot of money on signs.
Right.
Signs are posted after every intersection.
Okay.
And to, and what it states in the MUTC book is to remind the traveling public, doesn't specify exactly one minute.
Okay.
So, that's, we, we're not oversigning, but they are signed accordingly, so...
Okay.
Uh, there's, there's no, um...
Okay, my, my only question was, I didn't know if they changed some of the rules here, and if we should.
Not that I'm aware of, I haven't seen any paperwork stating as such, and I've been...
Shouldn't we, in the, not this month, because we've got a pretty good month ahead of us, should we at one point get a hold of Sergeant Turner and ask him to come in on a regular?
I called him, I talked to him, explained to him.
Okay, and he was all...
So, yes, he's aware, and he's, he's very familiar with Pownell, so...
Okay, so there's no wishes.
He said that that letter was sent to all towns and bank accounts, around the area.
Okay, as long as our ducks are all in a row, I, we're fine.
Well, they got a grant for doing our Pownell Road, and that was the, uh, well, not so much the model that we use, but, uh, every time you rehabilitate or use Class II resurfacing grant money on a section of road, you have to upgrade the signs also.
Right, I was gonna say, we just went through a sign upgrade here, and...
Right, that was over here. So, North Pownell is, we're always holding, link to South Stream Road, it's all been upgraded.
Okay.
Can I ask a question too, on the, the street signs? Was there a federal mandate that they're changing everything from capitals to lowercase, and is that for, gonna be for every road?
Not so much for capitals, they wanted to, to, uh, increase the size of the lettering, and that actually was put into law, but it was repealed.
It was repealed.
So, when we go through to replace signs, we have to actually put the larger, there's actually a six inch letter instead of four and a half inch letters, what we got now.
'Cause I noticed a couple on, on rotor change, but it was like it stopped there, and...
That was through our, the grant that we got, we got two grants, we got one for North Pownell Road, and one for Nile School and Lad Road, the whole length.
So, that's been repealed, that's a good thing, then.
Well, it is for us, cost-wise, because...
But it's any replacement, we do...
Right, we have to follow their guidelines.
We just moved them up 12 years ago, with the 3911 stuff, or 13 years ago, and, and that stuff came through, so, between the posts and the brackets, and that stuff can all be reused, but now you're replacing the blades with a, with a wider blade.
And are we set up...
On new letters.
Are we set up to do that, or do we have to contract that out?
No, we can, we can, we make our own size.
Right.
We buy the blanks, and we buy the letters, and we make our own size. Um, the other thing that, not to get off on that subject there, I think everybody at some point got a letter, you maybe have got it, but, uh, I think it's the Agency of Transportation wants us to renew our Q25 standards, which we have adopted 14 years ago, 13 years ago, and it's quite a, there's, all the three or four of the first pages is all upgrades from what they want you to do. Without reading through the whole thing, um, when you rehabilitate a road now, you have to have, they're mandating 15 inches of gravel subgrade, and then three inches of surfaced crushed gravel, and every, that's what you have to do every time in order to get the 10% or 20% more grant money, in every grant, which makes sense, but, um, I guess you don't really have to do too much if you're not gonna do any major reconstruction, so, we've got a good portion of that taken care of already, I mean, there's a few more sections that could be done, but, with the way money is nowadays, I guess it's, uh, it isn't gonna happen for a while.
Won't be dealing with it right away.
Right.
Yep.
But that, I think the board, uh, my suggestion is they should, you should read through that, what that'll give you is, it'll familiarize yourself with what needs to be done before the town adopts those standards, and it just, it's just a brief, well, it's a little bit more than brief, but, uh, it deals with, um, when you replace a tube that's three foot in diameter or bigger, or the hydraulic study states it needs to be bigger than that, whatever the stream alteration engineer suggests is what you have to, basically what you have to do, whether it be a box culvert, or, uh, narrow bridge, or, not a narrow bridge, but a abutment bridge.
Doing...
And I'm not sure, seeing as how we do have funds in the, um, box culvert fund, whether or not the board wants to go through and, uh, put either a box culvert or a, uh, actual bridge on Molly Anthony Road this year, that's something you can... That's something you can ponder. I haven't got the cost difference in uh, between a bridge or a box culvert yet, but that I'm looking into. And I got hydraulic studies coming for both of those on North Powell or Mount Anthony Road.
I'm looking and what's, when should this be adapted?
I recommend we do it the next meeting that Casey comes, so the board can.
Yeah, along with that, you'll, you'll have um, certificate of mileage to, okay, and you'll have the um.
We already did that.
Oh, you did that already?
Yeah, we already took care of that. That was due February at town.
Okay.
Alright. What I will do then is I'll have you, when we get down further here, make copies for everybody so they can all look it over.
Bring it home, yes.
Yep. Nobody, for each one of the board members to have, so, yeah, good.
The other thing you'll have on the next meeting that I show up to will be uh, Structures Grant application to sign. Uh, that entails um, box culverts, anything to do with the structure. Uh, we have filed for Bridge Forty-two, which is on Main Street in Powell, for the last two, three, two years, I guess now, to redo the deck of it. It's taking up the old deck, putting the membrane down, cutting back the abutments or the approaches, so you're, some more smoother transition getting onto the bridge, putting the membrane down and putting uh, three inches of asphalt over the top of the deck of the bridge, after the deck of the bridge is repaired. That's the Structures Grant. The Class Two Resurfacing Grant, which you probably won't see next year because we used one here last year on Barbers Pond Road. I, South Stream, Barbers Pond Road, North Powell Road, and Church Street are all the Class Two Town Highways that we have here in town. And I guess the next section, my recommendation would be to put the grant for North Powell Road, the section between Mount Anthony Road and just above Skippery, which is less than a mile, but uh, that's Class Two. Uh, if you so choose, I mean, you can, you can look at the other end of Barbers Pond Road. Uh, that's gonna need to be resurfaced or at least shimmed at some point, no big hurry on it. Uh, Church Street was done, I think in oh-six or oh-seven, so that's got a really good surface on it.
I hate to bring it up because I live on it, but have you seen Center Street lately? That's busted.
That's the, the first thing, as soon as the ground thaws out enough that we can actually do it without making a mess, we've gotta peel the black top.
That broke up bad.
Right over the top of the sewer line.
Sure did.
Right, uh, like I said, we'll peel it up. We're gonna have to dig it out. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing you can do. You can't uh.
I gotta believe that piece stone again created.
Yeah, well, you're in swamp too, so.
Yep, but they rusal out of that and that washed around.
Uh, so those are the two grants, unless somebody has a different uh, thought of what they would like to, for a grant, um, that, that would be the, the places where I'd use the funds if, if uh, like I said, we probably won't get it anyway because we haven't last year, but uh, you, you should at least file for it every year.
Okay. Alright. I know you've got probably plowing and good stuff to get out there, so I don't wanna tangle you up.
Yeah, I've got a little salt on the truck out there right now, and I've actually salted everything on that side of town, so when I come down through on North Powell Road here, it was, eh, just starting to stick a little bit, so I got a couple minutes, I mean, you know.
Casey, how long do you, um, does the board have to decide on the Class Two?
Uh, they, well, they can uh, I don't have to fill the grant up until, you know, the next board meeting, so.
When's the grant due? I didn't look, I just.
Ronnie drives over that road every section. That's probably the worst Class Two Town Highway we've got between uh, Mount Anthony and, well, just above where they stopped, when they fixed with the sewer line there, above, once it got it, that's, that's section two there, which is probably, I don't know, it's probably six tenths of a mile maybe if that.
Because you kinda recommended North Powell.
Well, it's either that or. Only Class Two, it needs anything, ain't it? Or that or Barbers Pond out on the other.
Barbers Pond Road, you know, I, I, I went.
That's pretty good out there, I thought.
Yeah, when they did uh, I went to Troy there once, oh, last, last middle of summer there, they did, they did the shoulders. They did from about the center of the wheel, right?
Right, well.
And that's all sections of South Stream Road, because the center is harder than.
Yep, that seemed to work pretty good down there too.
It looked good.
Yep.
But it's, I think it's three eights mix, but uh, it looked like it stayed there pretty good.
Yep, yep.
Guess the trick is the ten ton roller. But that's, if we were gonna do some of that nature, I mean, we could actually add some of that stuff to you know, doing North Powell Road and maybe shimming a section over there, because you won't be using uh, you know, a third of what you would use if you were gonna.
Yep.
It's got a pretty good, it drops right out pretty good in some spots there.
That would work nice for when the time does come to resurface again, you've got a nice space out there.
Well, it'll actually prolong not having to resurface it for another.
Yes.
You know, ten, fifteen.
So you need permission to draw up these grants?
Nope, I just uh, I just want the board's approval to know that this is what works, so everybody's on the same page.
Right.
And uh, it, and the end of the, it'll, it'll tell you right in the grant how much I figure it's gonna cost and how much money the state's gonna reimburse it for doing it.
I see you go ahead with what you recommend.
Yeah, the bridge down there's gonna be an expensive venture because uh, you know, nowadays with the way environmental laws are, nothing can end up in the river at all. So it's, it's a matter, and it's a lot, it's uh, three inches of concrete deck on top of the main part of the deck, and all that's gotta come out.
You have to screen everything underneath to make sure nothing drops.
Right, and there's three spots, as you saw in the uh, um, bridge uh, surveys that the state does every two years, but there's three spots in that deck that uh, needs repair. So. Um, yes, we got a backup today. Their only issue that I saw with it was uh, instead of a one point four yard bucket, it's got a one point two five yard bucket in it. And once I showed him on the tag, this would've said, said, not a problem, we'll take care of it. And there's a few things that uh, it came with that even he didn't realize, it has ride control, which was not uh, put in the specifications. It also has a uh, the valving that runs the wrist is also set up to run a hammer. It has an actual drop valve, because on, on a hammer, you don't use, uh, the return line doesn't go back through the valve, it goes straight through the, into the tank, so. That's some pluses, plus the uh.
So someday you're gonna run hammers, what you're telling us.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's nice.
Run a hammer.
It's nice half-shore.
Right, and uh, and the wrist was, it wasn't one of the universal styles, you can put on any machine, it's made specifically for a category. So it's heavy duty.
Excellent. That brings me to this point, where probably some of us will see it way before then, but April fourth, I would like this board's meeting to be at the Highway Garage and at the Transfer Station. We wanna do a site visit, the whole board, and we'll conduct our meeting from there. And I think there's what a safety inspection or something to that effect, some sort of a.
Just a site visit.
Site visit to look this over, and then we'll look at the Transfer Station at the same time and get comments and statements and.
You're gonna wanna do it before seven o'clock.
That's what's gonna be my next thing, to see if we could maybe move that up to six o'clock meeting on the fourth, because we are in daylight saving times then, but still to give us a little bit, yeah. Yep.
As far as that goes, you can go up and uh, you, I can show you the, the, the pit and uh, what we've been doing about uh, processing the materials and, uh, then the equipment is all right there close to the shop, so that's an easy walk around. Uh, hopefully by that time, there will be no plows, there's, or nothing like that there for you to look at, but.
Even if there is, it's, you know, it puts everybody on the same page when we start up, so.
I think six o'clock be good, gives them time. Make motion, move that up to six o'clock that night for that meeting.
Alright, six o'clock on the fourth. Is everybody in favor of that? If we have a second and go along with it?
One second.
Okay, we all in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Okay.
That is the fourth here.
That's the fourth, that's our first meeting in April, which would usually be with Casey, but we'll just schedule it as a meeting over there, site visit. And we'll have to inform our Transfer Station Supervisor of such also. Because we will go right from the transfer, or the Highway Garage.
It's gonna be in next week.
Yep. Okay.
Or they was, two times up, set him up at six and set Casey up at six thirty.
Well, I think we set six and seven, probably be a little safer, because half an hour's not, because we're gonna conduct our meeting too, so.
Well, just the warrants.
Yeah. But I'd, I'd like to say an hour, and then we're comfortable. Then we go to the Transfer Station. I'm sure half will probably join us right from the beginning anyway, so, okay.
So the gist of this meeting is to uh, look over what we have?
Yep, site visits, all the board gets to see everything there and see what we have for operations and. Uh.
Once a year, the Select Board is supposed to go to the Transfer Station for like a site inspection. It's part of compliance thing that I haven't really seen happen in the last year or so, but since you're going over that way anyway.
I travel through when I come down that road anyway.
You know, I don't.
Just to make myself visible.
I don't know if Dale's ever been over to there.
Where, the Transfer Station?
No, the, the Highway Garage.
Yeah, I've been over there. Not lately, but I've been over there.
Walked through the areas, I don't know if Mike's been through the area, Rich. So this just brings us all up to speed and puts us. So when we talk about things, we all know what's kinda going on.
So you gotta do like my company does, when there's company coming, you gotta sweep the floors, get it all nice and spick and span.
Get the pizza ready and everything, yeah. Okay.
You can tell them we got company coming.
Unless you got, uh, I don't think we got anything else here.
That was.
That uh, standards thing was, was pretty important there, so I think that uh, once the board goes through and reads through that stuff.
We should have that ready for your next, when we do this.
Yep. And uh, I guess that's all, Rich. Nice to have your board.
Thanks, Casey, appreciate that.
We're seeing a lot of each other then.
Whoever I can help out.
Yeah. Anything else?
Nope. Good luck tonight, and hopefully it'll be easy.
Yes.
Stay safe.
I had all I could do to get up hidden valley here a few minutes ago.
It's gonna be wet and heavy. Make ice on that forms.
The bugs on North Powell Road, and they go down south, it's all around. It should be good for a while. The back roads are still pretty muddy.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, the only thing we have before us now is March fourteenth, which will be our next meeting. I would like to have a meeting, I would like the board's approval to have Linda contact our auditors, we have two new auditors. I would like to have all three auditors contacted to come into our next meeting on March fourteenth, so we can meet with them.
Make motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that same meeting, we will have an executive session, it'll be personnel. It'll be involving our administrator and our treasurer. It'll be a short session, but it's what we discussed earlier at our last meeting, so this will be kinda the wind up on that and discussion within. And also, I think, Mike, you brought it up about the bricks down at the North Powell Park.
Yeah.
Couple weeks back.
I like to, let me talk about it, but I like to get rolling and as um, spring is coming around the corner, I think we'll get a person in here that's involved in these bricks to see what's going on.
What I would suggest is, being, it was brought up a couple weeks ago, and it has been in limbo, that whoever is involved with these bricks, if they have a plan, or what's going on with them, whatever pertains with them, to notify us at our next meeting, the fourteenth. If not, we will take action.
Could you just bring me up the street on this a little bit?
The park down in North Powell, Shorebridge Park, uh, there were bricks made up a while back.
Telling people about them.
Right.
And their names put on them. Uh, I'm not sure where that's standing, there was a committee working on that, and they were gonna be laid out in a pattern down there. Somehow that's, hasn't got finished off.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to complete, we've had questions.
Yeah.
About what's happening.
I don't know how much you were a couple years ago, and there's no say to nothing of these bricks, and people are starting to ask questions now.
Yeah, Cindy, Cindy talked to me about that too, Steve.
Okay, we're trying to play catch-up, so.
Okay.
What we'll want is a response by next week, or we will.
There's a lot of projects out there, it needs to be done.
This committee is only a bunch of women, is that correct?
I'm not sure.
Committee or something?
I, I'm not sure who's even involved.
This was bought up before and before and before, and it's been hashed to death. I bought it up before. And uh, I think that uh, I mean, we can contact them, of course, because you gotta have the availability of the bricks and everything, but I think we oughta either take, take the bull by the horns and. We could send, we got a machine down there anyway, scrape the sod off and leave a load of sand, and if we gotta hire somebody,
Yep.
let's get it done and get it over with. There isn't that many bricks to be.
That's what next, that's what next week's about. We're gonna let them respond to us by next week, in case they do have a plan.
Waiting for someone else to do it, I mean, if it's.
No.
The way I understand it, it's only uh, there's, there's a few women involved, I mean, hey, they're not gonna get on there and make it up or whatever.
But if they have a plan, I don't wanna mess their plan up. If they don't have a plan, and it's not brought before us by next week, we will design the plan and get it done, because it's been lingering. So I don't wanna jump ahead of them, but on the same token, we need to put this to rest, it's another thing that's been going on.
It's another project that's sitting out there and it's not doing nothing.
Cindy mentioned to me, she doesn't have a truck to get the stuff.
We have trucks.
How many bricks are we talking about?
Don't know.
Not a lot of them.
We don't even know that.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I wanna give until next week to respond to us. And we have road crews that can get them delivered down there, we have a warehouse, we can put them in right next to where they're gonna go, and we can make arrangements to have them planted.
Hundred percent sure where they all are.
So, you know, but if they have a plan, I don't wanna get ahead.
Right.
But I wanna.
I'm working together with them and.
Help them get it done, then one more thing has a period and we start from there. So. So with that, those are our next couple weeks scheduled out for us. And we have room for other little goodies and.
Somebody's gonna send a letter to who is it?
Cindy, isn't it?
Cindy? They have her coming next week?
Well, whoever the head of that committee is, I, I'm not even sure who it is anymore.
Cindy.
Okay. Alright, if we could have that letter then.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, with that, does anybody have anything else before us they'd like to discuss?
I'd like to know whether uh, like what I said at the beginning.
You just have to bring that up normal.
I, I guess you already addressed that, that we're gonna have a report back on.
Yes.
What transfer, as far as that goes, but there also was supposed to be a meeting to get out, get uh, to take care of the road at the Transfer Station. There's supposed to be a meeting between selectmen and, or whatever they decided. My suggestion is that uh, we get both principals in here and the five selectmen talk about it and get it done. That's something that should be done over to.
Uh, we can actually, well, we can bring that up while we're out there.
Next week, I don't know.
That's fine, but I mean that's.
How's it gonna be in next week?
Yeah.
That's true. Yeah, sure. Why don't we just gotta have schedule with Casey back for first thing and we'll.
Yeah.
Discuss it, only take a minute. discuss it. It'll only take a minute.
Just clear the air and get it done.
Yep.
All right, there's more for next week.
Yeah, cause I was gonna try to get over there and talk to him, and I dropped the ball on that one. I did not. So this would work, this as well. Okay, so that's our March 14th also. Okay. Would nothing else before us?
Nope. Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Thank you.